We'll continue with the regular session and I just want to thank each and every one of the people who attended, who put their names and consideration for this tedious task. Thank you and as from the council.
Yeah, Council President. Just for the people who will be serving, you'll be contacted by the folks from the Boston University Hudson Group and they'll be scheduling the meetings. The meetings will all be conducted by them without any influence of the City Council whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to the hearings 4A. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notices here that given that the City Council, the City PBD acting as a special permit granting authority will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 8th, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wagon Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. On the application from Gad Boys Enterprises LLC, 20 Brookwood Lane, Danvers, Mass. For a special permit seeking to operate a hair salon at 598 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. As filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Counselor Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
Would the petitioner please come to the podium and please state your name and address for the record and what you're looking to do.
Hi, how you doing? I'm Scott Gad Boys of 20 Brookwood Lane in Danvers. I didn't hear the last thing you said to do. Oh, I'm looking. Trying to get a special permit to operate a hair salon down next to the 7-Eleven. Currently, my wife and I, we own Casual Cut Salon. It's in the Big Y Plaza. We've been there since 1999. We have a special permit there. Due to the increased rents, things like that that are going up, we had to seek a new place to try to go to and we found an availability down at 7-Eleven that was suited us perfectly. We have a good reputation in the community now. We are currently, it's a plaza that seems to be, you know, always busy. It's its own little world over there and knowing that we're gonna be moving to a place where it's more of a neighborhood-y feel, my wife and I decided that for the sake of the neighbors, we're gonna, we have a tradition of being open on Sundays. It's always been the case. We're gonna, we're gonna close on Sundays if we're able to move to this new location.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience oppose? Hearing, seeing none. Counselor Sassla?
Thank you very much, Council President. I did have the opportunity to speak to Scott a few weeks ago about his plan. Many of you are familiar with this piece of property. It's a very well-known piece in West PBD. I'm happy to see a business that I think is, fits right in, as you saw from the application earlier, has been used for the same purpose in the past. I just had a couple of quick questions of Scott and then I'll open up the council floor. You did see the notice far as regarding ensuring the ventilation system is adequate to handle any mitigation of orders that might go to the next-door business. You're familiar with that and you'll make sure that doesn't happen?
Yes.
Okay. And the only other request I had is that, that you request of all your employees, whether there's limited parking out front, all your employees will park in the back, parking behind the building?
Correct.
Okay. Other than that, as I said, I think it'd be a great fit to the, to the community and I appreciate the fact that on your own, you decided out of respect to the neighbors, rather than making, you know, you were, you were amenable on your own to closing on Sundays and I think that's a show of, a good gesture, so appreciate that. I'll open up to my fellow counselors and I will be supporting this special permit.
Thank you.
Any counselors? Any counselors saying you none? Yep, none? I just had one or two questions. Is Counselor Sassla, if you could tell me, is it gonna state on the application that it's gonna be closed on Sunday? So, I mean, if he decided, changes mind?
The application right now does say business hours operations Monday through Friday and Saturday. He's, you know, if that's the way he's gonna go with it, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yes, that's fine. I understand that completely.
So basically what he's saying, excuse me, is that if you want to open Sunday, you'd have to come back for an amendment to the special permit?
Right.
Okay.
And how many customers will you see a day approximately?
I'm hoping a million, but I'll sell-
I don't think your neighbors hope that.
I'll sell for, you know, 30, you know?
Great. Well, I know you've been established business and, you know, welcome you and your wife. Counselor Sassla?
Yes, if I just could ask the property owner, Mr. Malloy, if you could come up for a second. I know you're from out of state, so I don't have the opportunity to always see you, but you'd be surprised how many questions I've been getting recently regarding your property and it's referred to as 7-Eleven, but there seems to be a lot of speculation that the pro, that that's gonna be changed and could you, would you mind addressing that at all? Give us maybe a little bit update. It seems to be like the worst-kept secret. Mr. Malloy, would you mind coming up? It's nice to have you here. I know you, you come from out of state and I appreciate that. While you were here, I don't know if you heard my question, but there's been, it was at Tedeschi's, it's changed to 7-Eleven and now it seems to be pretty well-known that there's gonna be a change. It's gonna continue to stay in the same use, but there might be new property on. I just wanted maybe to enlighten the community on that. There seems to be a lot of conjecture on social media stuff and while you're here, I'd figure the opportunity to maybe tell everybody what's going on.
Could you just please state your name and address for the record so the clerk gets it?
Brian Malloy, Grantham, New Hampshire. My family's owned that property for 50 years, maybe. There was like seven questions there.
Question I had is that it is 7-Eleven and then it's been pretty, it's been out there that it's gonna be going under another ownership change, but staying in a convenience store. I was just wondering, maybe you could, you could confirm that?
The property or the business?
So, 7-Eleven, they've pretty much been telling the community that they are now, it's gonna be changed, it will not be a 7-Eleven, but it should be staying in an independent convenience store. I'm just looking for confirmation of that because I do get a lot of calls on that and they, the store themselves have been telling everybody that, so I figured where you were here, I figured I'd ask you.
I have gotten notice that there's going to be a change. As far as I'm concerned, it didn't affect me as far as 7-Eleven is the company I'm dealing with, so I don't know if that helps your question.
You mean in a convenience store?
Oh, yeah. It's gonna remain a convenience store.
Great. That's all I, was curious, I said, there's just been a lot-
Yeah. This just happened like three days ago, I got a notice.
Well, thank you and I appreciate the improvement to the property. I know you've made some over the last two or three years. I know there's a budding neighbor who's here who appreciates that and glad to see that now we have a tenant finally. Thank you.
I have a question about the parking. You're gonna mandate that he parks cars on another lot, or that's a nice suggestion?
My request, part of the special permit is that the employees park in the back, which is still your property?
It's two separate tax map lots, two separate agreements, two separate everything. So if I chose to sell that piece, then the parking that is required by the special permit is no longer valid.
Counselor, you wanna revisit that?
That was never, that was all a surprise.
Counselor, did you, you want to revisit that at this time because certainly that could-
That's a huge issue.
Yeah.
Just out of, do you point on, so you do own it currently, correct?
I what?
You do own that back piece?
I do, but it's two separate lots. When I heard that, the first thing I thought of was, well, if I change my mind, I wanna sell that, what does that do to poor Scott and the special permit? It's never been required before. I'm happy to let Scott do that, but we shouldn't be mandating it as part of the special requirement since it's two separate lots. One has nothing to do with his business.
Where would the dumpster go if he ever sold that? That goes, that's on that piece?
That's not on the lot.
On the lot?
No.
I will, I will not make it pass a special permit, but you will, you will allow him to have the employees park there?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that as long as it's not on the mandate of the special permit.
It's fine with me.
Okay. It's fine with me.
With, with that change, I'm just gonna open up to the counselors just in case they have. Counselors, with that change, does anyone have any questions, concerns, or want to make a statement? Hearing, seeing none. Counselor Sassla?
I can motion to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Sassla?
Yes, like to, like to motion to approve the application from Gad Boys Enterprises LLC, 20 Brookwood Lane, Danvers, Mass. For a special permit seeking to operate a hair salon at 598 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. As filed in accordance with Sections 4.2, .5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. So moved.
You heard the motion? Roll call, please.
Counselors O'Neal?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sassla?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Rozig-
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gravel?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Moving on to 4B, special permit. Would the counselor please read the notice? Clerk, I'm, I'm thinking ahead, you know, from retirement and-
Notices here that given that the City Council of the City PBD acting as a special permit granting authority will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 8th, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wagon Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. On the application from Friends Auto Shop Services, Inc., 23 Upton Street, PBD, Mass. For a special permit seeking to operate an auto repair business at said 23 Upton Street, PBD, Mass. As filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council, Counselor Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
Would the petitioner please come to the podium? Please state your name and address for the record and what you're looking to do.
And my house at 28 Warren Street, PBD, Mass.
Will you please state what you're looking to do?
Is a mechanic shop. It's already installed. I'm sorry. Is a mechanic shop on 23 Upton Street. Good evening, counselors. I'm sorry. We already tried, make every request was allowed to us to do. We spoke twice, I spoke twice with Mr. Mutszolos. I showed him the shop, how we do, how you operate the shop. I know we had some issues. I'm gonna try attack one by one. The one who was taxed, is all paid. We did pay the old tax.
Can I have a motion to accept communications on the tax? Counselors, anyone like to make a motion to accept?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. We have, I believe one of the issues we had is the-
Do you, I'm sorry, sir. Do you have a copy of the pay tax for the clerk? Do you have a copy? Is that the only copy?
A copy, yes. I believe I have the original.
You have a copy for us to take?
Excuse me?
Your counselor?
Yes. Can we go through the process first? I will get to these questions here. They need a little assistance in how the process runs, so can we get this started and I will walk you through this?
Certainly, Counsel Mazzullis. Go ahead. Counsel Mazzullis will walk, will help you through.
Okay. Okay. We all said, did you introduce yourself? I didn't even get that.
I'm sorry. My name is Antonio Babo. I work for Mr. Olivera. I try help you out, put his business together. I already had three businesses in PBD. A long time ago, I had a body shop.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Okay, that's fine. Mr. Chairman, I met with these two gentlemen on two different occasions and what they're looking to do is put an auto, a repair, an auto repair shop on Upton Street in an old tannery site which isn't allowed use. Now, I went down there and because of the language barrier, I am trying to help them out and they're on the right track. They just needed a little help on how to do this. Now, there were numerous issues on, that they had to address before they would be granted their permit and that's one of the things I've been going over, over with them. And we'll go to the first page and that was a letter from the Police Department through, let me put it this way, through not understanding and having a-
Counselor, if I may, I just wanna make sure there's no one in the audience that would like to speak in favor or oppose prior to you speaking. I know you were trying to help them out, but-
Well, okay. I was, I was wondering why we didn't get to that.
Yeah, I was, I wasn't gonna cut you off, Counselor, if you're being the dean of the council here today.
It seemed like we were off schedule.
A little bit, but it's, it's okay. We'll all get there at the end. So any, anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition? Please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, counselors. My name's Dennis Kalogji. I live at 13 Joyce Road. I'd like to shed a little light on the subject. They're not trying to put in an auto repair shop. They've been operating illegally in there for better than five years. I know this because approximately two and a half years ago, the applicant signed a lease with me for a building that I own on the corner of Upton and Walnut. In the lease, they were supposed to seek their permits and applications and proper business licenses. They moved in, they opened their business, and approximately six weeks later, I got a call from City Hall saying that I was in violation. I explained to them, I showed them the lease. They never sought their permits. They knew that. They never had permits. Now, they had moved from this building on Upton Street originally and signed my lease. They never had the permits and licenses from Upton Street originally. They never sought their permits and licenses, which they knew, with me. Instead of doing the right thing, and we offered them legal counsel to help them through with the language barrier that they did not take. They opted to default on the lease, abandon the building, and move back to Upton Street where they could operate for better than two and a half years now with no licenses or permits. I'd also like to offer that if they were granted a permit today, that they should check and see if there's MDC drains in the, in the location they're trying to occupy, if there's the proper fire suppression systems in those spaces that they're trying to occupy, but have already been occupied in. And I'd also like to point out that with communications through the Police Department, on my end of Upton Street, I'm positive there's no vehicle parking allowed on Upton Street at all, which is very lax. But on their end of Upton Street, they have abandoned vehicles, vehicles without license plates, tow trucks that they've pulled plates off of and put on other plates, and this has been going on the entire time. They're not trying to put a business in there. I believe this is probably something bigger that's going on now with the buildings for sale and they've had multiple offices on it. The other thing I'd offer is that on that location, there's a small fenced-in area and that fenced-in area is occupied almost every square inch by other vehicles from other businesses that are in there. So even if they were granted the permit, they don't have the parking or the space to operate this business on that location. Thank you.
Mazzullis? Excuse me?
Yeah. Sir, could you just please come up? I think counselor has a question for you.
Okay. Could you tell me who you are again?
Yes, Dennis Kalogji.
Dennis Kalogji?
Yep.
Okay. And would, you own that building or?
I own the building on the corner of Upton and Wal, and Walnut.
Tony's Garage?
Yes.
The old Tony's Garage?
Yes.
Okay. You caught me by surprise here. I didn't know of anybody opposed to this. You know, you're the first one to come by. Can I have a two-minute recess?
Two-minute recess.
Mr. Chairman, because of new information here that I was unaware of, I'd like to do a little checking out on this and I'd like to recess this till our next council meeting. So moved.
Counsel Mazzullis, you understand that would be next Thursday?
Pardon me?
It would be next Thursday. Is that enough time for you? Or would you like to put it later?
I would put it off to the next one. Thursday's too soon.
Right. It'd be December 13th?
Okay.
Is that, okay?
Right.
You heard the motion to the recess till December 13th? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Like to go to reports of committee. Public Service Committee, Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. So tonight we had a meeting of the Public Services Subcommittee in order to discuss snow removal procedures with the Public Services Director, Bob La Bossiere. Also present was Jim Hefe, the Hefe, the Facilities Director. Present on the council were the members, the current members of Gravel, Mazzullis, Rozignol, and Sassla, along with the remainder, the full remainder of the City Council. It was a spirited discussion regarding snow removal in specific woods. I won't get into the gist of each and every question, but briefly, Counsel McGinn had mentioned that there is a manual that at one time was supplied to the council regarding wood responsibilities on the city side and contact information for snow removal contractors. We did ask that Mr. La Bossiere again supplied that to the council, which he agreed to do. Also discussed, Counsel Gravel had mentioned small bobcats for the downtown as well as calls to inform the council of the status and number of pieces out at the beginning of any snow event. Counsel Manning had asked questions regarding the supervisory staff and the possible usage of, of department heads who were on salary to do some of that. It was a brief discussion on that and lastly, Counsel Charis had asked about staffing, whether we had a full staff of private contractors and, well, I shouldn't have said lastly because we had Counselor Rozignol had asked about wood supervisors and who we could contact. Mr. La Bossiere informed us that the best contact would be Kevin Kelly, which who we all know and have that contact information. So unfortunately for Kevin, we've said it publicly, so each of us will call him numerous times, probably 10 to 15 per storm event, times 11. Put that, there were no motions made during the hearing, during the Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Also, I report to you on the Committee of Joint School Committee and City Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that, I was unable to make that meeting, so I deferred to Counselor Rozignol, who serves on that committee also, and in this case, I'll defer to him for the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a meeting with the school committee. That meeting took place on October 30th. In attendance was Superintendent Ms. Murtagh, Mr. Hawkman, who happens to be in the audience, Mr. Amico, Mr. Olympia, the chairwoman from the school committee side, Ms. Beverly Griffin Dunn, and as well as Counselor Sassla joined me in attending the meeting. The main focus of the meeting was school start times and changing them to have the high school go to school later. Currently, the school committee is looking at that. That's going to be something that's on their agenda moving forward every meeting. There was a great discussion through all parties regarding the benefits, the costs, the detriments, and I think ultimately the goal is to move in that direction, but it depends on at what price. I know when we left, the topic was going to be bus contracts and staffing, and that's information that they, the school committee is going to get. One of the things that the school committee did already was send out a standardized survey, which went to parents, students, and staff. They are going through that information and compiling that and that will be an ongoing discussion. So we have not set up a date, but we'll be meeting again on that topic relatively soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any counselors have any questions? I just have one, Counsel Rozignol. I know this, this meeting was set up about start time and is, is there any conversation going on again about redistricting? I know that's been a hot topic, been talked about some, some years. I think there was a plan that was drawn up at one point. I'm not sure if it ever came out, but is that something that you, your committee is planning to discuss?
That topic was never broached as far as that particular date, but that's certainly something I can bring back and ask for a, an update on our next meeting, so that's not a problem.
Thank you, Counsel. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor O'Neal?
Nothing. Thank you.
Counselor McGinn?
No motions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counselor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, I have to cancel the industrial community development meeting next Tuesday night. Any preference on when we could reschedule that? Do you want to go on an off night? We only have one meeting left after next.
I think the council wanted an off night, so we can talk about some calendar suggestions.
Okay. Tentatively, December 11th. It's a Tuesday night.
The 11th. I think that's clear right now.
Okay.
I think.
Can you, can you inform everyone that we're canceling?
I'll inform everyone. I'll check to see if Mr. Bella Vance is available for that meeting?
Okay.
And then I'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you. No further motions, Mr. President.
Counselor Sassla?
Thank you, Counsel President. I have one motion. Motion requests that the Forest Street Department trim back the tree at Gooddale in Forbes Street so that the street sign is visible from the street. So moved.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions. Thank you, Counsel President.
If counselors don't mind, I'm just gonna skip over Counsel Mazzullis and come back to him after he's done. I'll come back to you, Counsel, if you want. It's motion and resolution. Would you like some more time? Counsel Manning Martin, please. Counsel Rozignol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one motion this evening and that's a motion to add the City Council to each district robocall that the mayor sends out. Right now, if there is something going on, let's say in Ward 6, there was a water issue or I know he had sent out a robocall to the immediate, about us to Ruselo, and that's something that us as a council, I think, should be added to. So I make that in the form of a motion that the City Council's added to any robocalls that's going out of the mayor's office, just so we're abreast of any issues or any communications that he may undertake. So moved.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Rozignol has had it?
Nothing further.
Counselor Turco?
Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8A.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive, under suspension of the rules, item 8F.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to receive and adopt as advertised, item 10B.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions.
Counselor Melville? I'm sorry, apologize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that on Sunday, November 11th, at 8:30 AM, they're going to, we're gonna be doing the PBD Veterans Breakfast. It will be in honor of veterans, as well as special recognition to World War, the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I, along with- end of World War I, along with PBD Women Veterans and their contributions and sacrifices. So that will be on at 8:30 on Sunday. So just a reminder to folks on that particular event, that will be here in the auditorium. No further motions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Grevell?
No motions.
Thank you. I only had one motion, and that is ask for the Department of Public Works work with a conjunction of Electric Municipal Light to look at adding light poles and lights up on Jill's Way. That's put in as a motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. And just give a little report on Rusolo. We met, they had a neighborhood meeting held yesterday, last night, at Petrillo's. There was a gathering of their group consisting of five to seven representatives, and I would say about 15 residents throughout the city. They spoke about what they're planning to do, and recognizing that there was communication gaps in the past, and also understanding they want to go for, forward with some improvements to their tanks. Some of the things that was talked about, about improving, I, I gotta say, had been talked about for the last, I know, three years that I've been involved with it. Health Department Sharon Cameron was there to listen and take notes, and it was really exciting to see that the thing that she was talking about, since day one, they have recognized that could be the area, could be, would be the area of releasing the odors, and they're taking a hard look uncovering that. I'll be putting up some more information on, on the social media about the improvements, and I'm going to be looking for the city official site also to put up that stuff, because that is information that is being provided to the city as a official health department. And that is all on that. Can I have...
The motions?
Counselor Grevell, would you like to go and make motions of Communications? We haven't accepted yet. 8B?
On motion, 8B, receive. And, well, that's a receive and approve, right? It's just a transfer. Receive and approve. Subject of all papers being in order. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. If you go right down the line, Counselor, it'd be great.
Move to receive item 8C.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
That one's got to go to committee, right?
It's only change?
Yeah. Motion, receive 8D, and refer to the ICD Committee. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Counselor McGinn?
Yeah, on, on the motion, you know, these, it's a function of where these come from, the timing, and this one comes from a property owner, so the, the 14-day requirement to send it to the planning board, I believe, applies here in this case. So the clock, the clock on this one would start either when it was stamped by the clerk, or tonight, when we're receiving it. I'm not 100% certain on that, but in either case, that would be either November 12th or November 22nd. So I think the prudent thing to do here is to send this to the planning board, so that we meet the 14-day requirement. We could also send it to Industrial Community Development and deal with it in parallel.
Isn't the, are we talking about the same thing, 8D, their map change?
Yes, we are. It's a zoning.
Counselors, this for a point of information, there was stamped October 29th.
Right, so 14 days would be November 12th. So... I, I believe that's the proper move here, Counselor Grevell, so that's, that's my...
That's fine with me.
That's my suggestion.
I have no problem with that. Send it to the planning board. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
8E, move to receive?
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
8F?
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And 8G, I thought we had received 8G, but move to receive 8G.
We did. We did receive. Thank you. Well, as well, Counselor.
9A, petitions from Verizon New England, Inc. to place a new two-inch conduit to an existing pole, set up a public hearing.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Taxi limousine driver's license, license number 42, Richard Champagne, and license number 43, Kevin McGray. Move to receive and approve. Subject of all papers being in order.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Item 10A is ready for council adoption, known and cemented, section 1981, parking prohibited, handicap zone, Dakota City of PBD, on 6 Summer Street. Move to adopt as advertised.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Counselors, have a good night.